Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet, President of Speedway Town Council. Today is June 26, 2023. It's 7:01 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the Speedway Town Council. First on the agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence your cell phones. First up, introducing the council. Starting on my far right are Town Manager Grant Kleinhans.
Good evening.
Next to Grant, Eileen Fisher. Next to her is David Lindsay, Councilor. On my far left, our Attorney Bob Clutter.
Evening.
On his right, Councilor Gary Rags.
Good evening.
And on my exact left is Gary Pedego, Vice President.
Hello.
Next is the approval of minutes. These minutes have been distributed to council. There's no changes or corrections. We'll approve them as submitted. Hearing none, they're approved. First up and then is the ordinance, 1377, an ordinance to add a new chapter to Title V of the Speedway Municipal Code concerning short-term rentals. Grant?
Yep, thank you. So I'll be kind of going over the high points of the ordinance. There are draft ordinances in the back of the room, on the table, both of this one and the other ordinance on the agenda this evening. So we have, we actually presented this, a similar ordinance, back to the council in November. At that time, we put it on hold, we took some further input, did a little more investigation, met with a couple of members of the public, as well as those who own or operate short-term rentals in the community. Bob and I worked to make amendments to that ordinance to an acceptable level. We think the final product here addresses the concerns that the council has and that the town has about regulating or monitoring those short-term rental units in our community. I think it's important to make it clear, we are not against those, we are not trying to run those out. What we're trying to do is make sure that if they are operated, particularly in a normal residential neighborhood, that they do follow the same rules and standards that all of us who own homes would have to do. So the ordinance has a lot of definitions. I'm not going to point out or discuss any of those at this point. I want to point your attention to page three, under section 549 dot, I'm sorry, 5.49.030. So the areas that we're most concerned about regulating with this ordinance have to do with, they're listed in Section 1, off-street parking. It must, just like any other residence, must be done on a hard-paved surface, like a driveway or the street itself. You can't park on the sidewalk, you can't park in right-of-ways, over easements, in people's backyards or front yards, and you cannot encroach on neighbors' properties as well without parking. The rental must be done in a manner consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. What this is referring to is we do have some short-term rentals that are in apartment buildings or other large commercial areas and potentially are a little bit different and have a different character than, say, a normal residential neighborhood. The owner will provide information to the town. They in fact will fill out, and this is a draft permit, it is not finalized yet, Clerk Treasur's office is working through that. They will have to fill that out, providing the information as listed here. The big point is emergency contact information. If there are issues or problems from those that rent the properties, we must be able to get in contact with the owners, and they must be able to get there within, the ordinance says, three hours to provide a physical key or provide a login or a keypad electronic entrance, so that if there are issues, we can, we can get in and check that out. That would never preclude, in an emergency situation, a fireman, a policeman, other emergency personnel would be able to get in no matter what, but if there's an issue, we, we have to be able to get, get that person. So that contact information, that's contained there in Section D. The appearance of the building, residential character, they also must be kept in good repair, good order. That means landscaping kept up, grass mowed, trash and debris removed, and all of those things. Can't encroach on properties. Renters who are renting that property must not create a nuisance. Now nuisance is defined in the, but it can be everything from loud noises, parking issues, arguments in the street, et cetera. And it specifically mentions town noise regulations or fireworks regulations. Also cannot rent to sex offenders or do various sober living, other illegal aspects. They're contained in paragraph I. You can read through those. And we are requiring a permit. This application has all that information. There is a one-time $150 fee per dwelling unit that is rented. That will have to be paid at the time the permit is acquired. That permit is then good for one year. Upon its expiration, they are to renew that, but there is no $150 fee. I believe, Bob, unless someone buys it or it's transferred to someone else, then they would have to pay that, that fee again. All of that information is contained. The big thing is, we have a three-strike system. So when someone uses a property as a short-term rental, if there are three major disturbances or major issues, the town has the right, after that third one, to revoke this permit. And they cannot have a permit again for a year's period. They can't appeal that to the Town Council, our legislative body. The Town Manager is the one that makes that determination based on the facts of the case and what has gone on. And I would envision, from a matter of practicality, you know, if we get called over because somebody was a little loud at 11 o'clock, that's not a strike. A strike might be the seventh time they're called over that night and the party didn't stop, or a large disturbance, like a fight or something, or damages, or parking all over the yard. Those things would, are more serious, but we are going to treat this very similar to what we do with our normal ordinance violations. You know, we're going to give you a chance to correct it, and if you don't correct it, you may get a ticket. Now, my understanding is we will write those tickets to the renters themselves, not the homeowner, unless the homeowner had a part in that. So if somebody comes over, has a loud party, they're going to get the ticket for being The permit lasts for a year, we already talked about that. There's a lot of other details in the ordinance. My intention here tonight was not to read, read through every one of those. The penalty section is pretty clear, under 5.49.060. What a violation, classy infraction. The three violations are citations in a year. All of that is spelled out. While I am sure 95% of all the short-term rentals in town will not have a problem with this, we might have some that do have issues with this. But I believe the town has the right to regulate, particularly in residential neighborhoods, people live there, they bought their home 30, 40, 50 years ago, they have the right to, to enjoy their property as well. And if a property next to it cannot abide by the rules and takes that away from people, we have a right to issue violations and revoke that license ultimately if this is something that continues. So I'll answer any questions you might have. This is just a proposed first reading this evening. We will take your input or comments or suggestions and then look at scheduling, probably at the July 10th Town Council meeting for a second reading. And then after that, there is a process by which it becomes effective.
30 days after publication, after the second reading. It's adopted after two readings.
Mr. President, I want to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1377 as presented by our Town Manager.
Okay, so a motion and a second. I'll open up for discussion. So anybody from the public that would like to speak, please step forward. Your for, against, whatever.
Hi, I'm Jane Gao Chi, and I've been here before. I live at 5041 West 15th Street, and I currently own three STRs. And so I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm currently paying renters' permit, landlord permit. Will I have to pay both?
A short-term rental property is different than a landlord permit. Typically, a landlord permit is if you rent that house, you know, for years at a time or a year at a time with a lease.
Right, and that's what I've been paying for the last five years, that I've been a short-term.
Okay.
No, you would pay both.
But I have been, kind of.
But we didn't, we didn't have a short-term rental ordinance before.
Oh, okay. So I could go back and forth from one to the other, but you would need to be notified?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. There was one issue that we, well, there's two issues that we find as owners are going to be really, really, well, not only are difficult, I don't even quite understand the benefit. One is that in here, it does state that we are not to advertise, that we are, I think, and I don't know where it was, I just know it was there. That we're to not let our neighbors let on that we are a short-term rental, kind of. No?
I think the concept is to operate.
Or did they take it out? Did they take it out? Section 3.
Do you want to just speak on that one?
I can't find it. Well, the only other issue I wanted to worry about, and Carolyn can probably find it easier than I can, is that you have very clearly stated that there is one person that is in contact at any given time for the emergencies, and we just humbly request that we be able to offer you two or three names, manager, husband, brother, I don't care. There is no way that one of, we even struggle with that, with getting phone calls at 2:00 in the morning because there's been an issue. You know, every hotel, a lot of hotels shut down, and every hotel has a changing of the guard, and we have to have a changing of the guard or we couldn't travel, do anything else. That said, it doesn't say that in here, and I would love for that to be addressed because I certainly don't want something to ever happen that was never possible, and at the same time, it wasn't spelled out here. Even though maybe it all makes sense to everybody, it's not in writing in here. And we are all very comfortable, those of us who are happy with the permit, we're comfortable to work within the confines of and restraints that we all want to keep a great community, but, but if there's an emergency, it's as much an emergency to the owner as it is to the police and you and the neighbors and everybody else. We have to have a couple of names on there, and I would like it spelled out.
Sure. Isn't that, that's something to be added between now and second reading?
Yeah, and that would just be listed on the permit. You just list two people.
That's fine, but that's, it's being implied in here, and I'm asking you to put it in writing. It's a very easy sentence to add. And then, yes, of course, I want to put four people down there, and most of them are my neighbors.
But the intent is the property owner would be the primary person.
Absolutely, yeah. I think property owner has to be mandatory, and I do like that you, because if somebody's in Texas and they don't know, absolutely, we need to have their contact.
Could, Mr. Clutter, could a simple thing be the owner's contact person or a representative always be available? Just add that?
Well, even easier than that, the owner's contact persons in parentheses, with the S in parentheses.
Okay.
Which.
Just help me out, put it in writing so that we don't get our hands smacked for something that was, at one time, a reasonable conversation and never putting in writing. So the other concern, I think Carolyn has that as well, so I'll let her speak to that.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Brown, 2213 North Auburn. Obviously, Jane and I have been discussing this at length. I've met with, with Grant and Bob. And just for the citations, the areas that we have the issue with, it's the 549005, number three. We do want our short-term rentals to be operated in a way that they don't disrupt our neighbors, but our neighbors are also paying attention to our homes. We do not have different cars that come in. A normal homeowner does not purchase a new car every week. Even just different vehicles being parked there, different people walking in or out, respectfully renting the house, your neighbors are going to notice. We don't need to hide. We are not selling drugs. We are selling a police to sleep. And I don't think I've ever had a complaint about my properties. I've been doing this since 2017, 5220 West 16th Street. I've never been aware of a police run. My neighbors all have my cellphone number, and I've asked them to contact me if anyone bothers them, or if there's any issues. I would like to think that other hosts are like this as well. So I don't think we need to hide, and I think it's okay for the neighbors to realize that we are operating short-term rentals, because then they know to reach out to us if they see anything. I want to know if there's anything wrong with my house. And then the other part about multiple contact persons, I think it's in everyone's best interest. If I'm in court, as I'm an attorney as well, and there's a phone call that I miss, I'd like you to go to number 2, 3, 4 on the list to immediately get attention. My parents now live close by, granted, they're elderly, but they have their phones on, and they would be close, and they would also be concerned about it. They, they know how important it is to maintain the business. I've got a co-host whenever I'm out of town, if I'm on a plane. There are multiple layers that most of us put in place to make sure that someone can always be reached. So I just think that the ordinance should reflect that, and the application should have room for that.
Back to your first point on, you say it's number 3 under 005?
549005, 3, the last sentence. That the average neighbor, under normal circumstances, is not aware of their existence.
Oh, I understand.
And they should absolutely be aware of our existence. Other than that, there have been a lot of positive changes made from the first version that I appreciate Grant working so hard on this.
Good.
Any other questions for me?
Anything? You guys want to?
Are you saying the last sentence, you want struck out of it, or do you want different wording for that?
Just short-term rentals must meet the standards contained in this chapter, period.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Hi, Michelle?
Good evening. Michelle Leidy, 4853 McCray Street. I want to thank you for picking this back up. I know you've spent many, many weeks looking this over backwards and forwards. I appreciate the three-strike rule being in there. I think that is wonderful. I think it's great that it's going to be non-transferable. As you all will know, that half of our homes in this town are rentals, whether it's a condo or an apartment or a rental home. So to have such a high percentage of our single-family homes be STRs, I think this is a very important ordinance. I have a question about the sex offenders. Are you expecting these folks to do background checks on their renters before they book? Or is this just in case one happens to show up and it's accidentally found at a run, and that would be a strike? Or are they expected to do background checks?
I don't think it's required for them to do background checks. I just think we wanted to identify the types of things that we don't want to be happening or occurring there.
Okay.
But on that, that's public information.
Right. I didn't know if you were adding an extra step to their booking, like if somebody books with them, then they, are they supposed to go to the internet and do some sort of research?
It's not required.
Okay.
You can get on the sex offender mail list through Marion County Sheriff, and many of you probably already are, so you already know. I mean, you get names constantly.
Yes, yes. I still, this is, this is great. I think this is wonderful. Maybe down the road, I'd still like to be able to cap that, maybe as through attrition, as we starting to lose permits, whether they're revoked or just not renewed or whatever, I would still like to put a number cap on this because I think this is critical. You all, we all worked really hard to make this community what it is, and it is, is a great place to, to live and work and raise your kids, and I would like to protect it and keep the continuity of our community, and so I appreciate that.
I have similar interest. I'm not sure that it's permissible, is it, Bob? By state statute, I don't know that we, if we had a HOA as the whole town, maybe that'd be a different story, but I don't know that we can, can we?
Not as the law currently exists.
Yeah, and we've.
Okay, someday.
And we have, we have gone before state legislature pushing for more responsibility. I'll say it that way. And they haven't responded yet, but we'll keep trying.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good point, Gary. I mean, that, you know, even during the last session, and, you know, we had several things that we were looking at in order to really gain control and make sure that from a public, public safety standpoint, that these get addressed in Tommy manner. And I think the state is finding out that it's not just Speedway. It's, you know, all of Marion County and all the small towns, anybody that is attracting, you know, groups of individuals that would like to stay in a home versus staying in a motel at that point. So you're absolutely right. Any other discussion? Anybody else would like to speak?
I have one question. I think I know the answer to it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. We're saying a strike is when an ordinance is written, correct?
No, it is when an ordinance is written and the offending person has a true finding against them. So either they don't show up in court, or they show up and have a trial, and the judge rules in our favor.
So this is dependent upon our police department citing the violations. The police department can respond seven times and decide not to write anything.
Correct.
And that's not a.
That's not a strike. And like Grant said, you know, maybe the first two times, turn down your music, turn down your music. The third time, they show up that same night, they might write a citation, but it is dependent upon a citation being issued, correct? For an actual strike.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'd like to hear from Grant on, since as Town Manager, you're going to be managing this process, correct? So can you walk everybody through from the application standpoint, who has the responsibility of, you know, reviewing the applications and then also on the permitting standpoint, issuing the permit, and then if there is penalties in relationship, an officer does write that, the citation, who records that? And who determines that?
So this whole, this whole thing's going to require us to create a standard operating procedure from how the permits are handled, who reviews them? It will be reviewed by the Clerk Treasur's office. Payment is made, how long it takes to get that done, how we remind people about, hey, your ordinance is, is coming up in three months, you need to make sure and renew that. We do that currently with landlord licenses, so that's probably going to be a similar process. But then when the police do respond and have a finding and they write a ticket, you know, it's going to have to be reported to me because I don't follow the police frequency all night, and so someone's going to have to report that to my office. We'll then have to document that, that, hey, this, this has a pending ordinance, and if it goes to the court and is found, then we'll, that'll be strike one. We'll have to let that person know. I think it talks about notification, and they have a right to appeal that, even, I think it's, the, whether I give it a strike or not. So there, there are some operating procedures we're going to have to write down to kind of flesh this ordinance out, and we're prepared to do that.
Okay.
So, so those operating procedures, sounds like a really good idea. But there's no date on this, effective, being effective? So will we have those procedures or bulk of those in place before it becomes effective?
Yep. And we've also talked about giving a slight grace period, for lack of a better word. We've got to, we've got to notify people of this, we've got to put it out. I don't expect everyone to run up right away, and it's going to take a couple of months to get to that process, so we've got to, particularly this first year, I think, be a little more flexible than in the future.
I think it's, that's great, because I think it's really important for the homeowner, the business owner, to really know what to expect.
Yeah.
And how to, how to proceed.
Yeah. And I would assume, one of the things we're going to do, and we've already looked online to kind of gauge how many there are, at any given time, there's 60 to 120, give or take, if not a few more. And we, we've got to start better logging, looking at that list to build the list, and then following up with that, and kind of, kind of go from there.
Thank you.
I don't think this is going to be just, you approve the ordinance, and tomorrow we're issuing permits. It's, there's going to, there's going to be some steps to getting it.
Okay.
Implemented.
Any other questions for Grant?
The comments that were made, I think, are very good. I agree with them. The, the Section 3, I agree that, that just that one sentence needs to be written. Is that something we need an amendment to, or is that something maybe on the next reading we can do?
Yeah, what I would suggest is if you're so inclined to pass it on first reading, have it subject to those two changes, and then I'll have the revised one to you at the end of the week for the next meeting.
And I'd just like to make one other comment. I was the one that brought up the idea that we table this, and I think this shows that when we can come together and work together to get the final resolution to something, this room was full of people that were not happy with us. And for this, to get to this, I know you, Bob, have done tremendous work on this, Grant, you have too, and I appreciate both of the work on it, and others that have been involved, the group that's here that have been vocal, we greatly, I greatly appreciate that, and I think the, I want to speak for the rest of us, but we all greatly appreciate your input in how this has come together. I think this is, finally, we've come to something I think is very workable. So Grant and Bob, thank you both for your work.
And our staff did a great job, from code enforcement to police. You know, they're the ones ultimately that are going to be enforcing this, and they had some changes as we went through it. So it was, it was a team effort, for sure.
When would the second reading take place?
At your next meeting presumably, but it's your call.
Yeah, I mean, we had planned doing this July 10th, but if you wanted some more time, we could, there's no hurry.
As you had all alluded to, the state law provides that the ordinance could take effect 30 days after publication. It doesn't have to. So if you want to push that out a little bit further, let's say it's effective September 1st, or something like that, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Put a question on that. If it's effective September 1st, will they then renew January 1st?
It was intended that the permit goes year to year, so if they take out a permit September 1st, then they would go until the following September 1st.
Okay.
But some of, like Grant said, they're not all going to come charging in the first week or two. It's going to take a little time to get the community educated and have them. them come in and do their.
I think that's something, though, that our Clerk Treasurers Office, when business permits are renewed and alarm permits are renewed, to coordinate, to have that timing on that, so it's all together. Or maybe he wants it at a different time to help his staff as well.
Yeah, that's kind of more of a Philip question, I think, how he wants to do that. But it's important to note that when they are renewed, there is no additional fee. So it's just.
Okay.
It's making sure the contact information's updated.
Contact information is accurate.
Still being used as a short-term rental, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Well, and that first, I mean, it could even be edited more, that first year would actually be 15 months or 16 months or whatever that.
Right.
So that it carries to that normal timeframe that David's speaking about.
Okay. There's no other questions. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1377, per the subject to changes that we listed in discussion. All those in favor, please signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
Would you like to have second reading at your next meeting on July 10th?
Yeah, everything done, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can.
Yeah, I'll have it done by the end of the week. And one other quick question, if I could. Do you want me to go ahead and put in an effective date on there of?
Let's have a discussion with, with Philip. I know we've had those discussions. I want to verify that.
Okay.
Because he, ultimately, they're the ones that are going to have to be in charge of this. I want to make sure he's okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll put an effective, September or October, something like that.
Good deal.
Okay. Move on. Next item, item four, ordinance 1378, an ordinance to add a new chapter to Title VI of the Speedway Municipal Code concerning density, space, use, and location requirements for dwellings in the town of Speedway. First reading. I'd like to call, I have, anybody make a motion at this point?
I'd like to have Grant explain.
I'll give a very quick explanation. So we have colloquially been calling this the maximum occupancy ordinance. It's a lot more than just that. Basically, what it does is it attempts to lay out the standards, the basic standards, for having a property considered to be a residential dwelling unit. To have people stay overnight in that facility, it has to have a certain amount of square footage, certain elements that are required. Some of these elements are covered by state fire code, but we don't specifically have them identified in ordinances, and we felt it was important to call those out, so that our enforcement staff can use those to make sure people are living in safe conditions. That ultimately is what the ultimate goal of this ordinance is. So I'll turn your attention to page, I think it's page four of the ordinance, section 6.40.030. I'm just going to talk about three or four of these things. There's a lot of elements here. A minimum area is described as one habitable room that shall have not less than 120 square feet of gross floor area. That's a standard based on, I believe, Bob, state codes, correct? State building codes?
And health department.
And health department codes. Other habitable rooms shall have a floor area of not less than 70 feet. So that's important to call out. For someone to live there, ceiling height has to be seven feet. There have to be toilet facilities. We call out a water closet, lavatory, and a bathtub or shower. Hot water must be present in the home. Working utilities, including water, sanitation, electrical, and/or gas. If they can't use those utilities, that home or property should not be eligible to be, to be lived in, not in Speedway. It has to have climate control, smoke detectors. Overcrowding is one of those concerns. We don't want 12 people living in a home that has one bedroom. That, that's just not an acceptable standard. So a lot of the ordinance that's throughout this refers to that. Another occupancy guidelines on page six, section 6.40.060, says two persons per bedroom plus an infant of one year old or less. So that, that's called out there, once again, according to state code. On the next page, no basement may be used as a habitable room unless it meets the requirements of habitable rooms, as we've talked about, and the floors and walls are impervious to leak of underground and surface runoff, and they're insulated. So those are things that are just standard that should be enforced before those properties can be used in that way. So with that, I don't know, Bob, if you have any other questions or comments about the ordinance itself.
No, again, this was kind of a compendium of many different sources. It incorporates a lot of state fire code through the Homeland Security. Many of the provisions mirror state health code and county health code violations in terms of running water and heat and those types of things. And then we've also looked at similar ordinances in other municipalities and kind of came up with a stew and put everything together, saw what made the most sense for us. Joe's had a lot of input into this also. Some of it, he thought was a little bit unwieldy or a little confusing, so we've trimmed some of those things down. But outside of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. If that's all you have, Grant, then I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
Does anybody need to speak to this?
Well, I'll make a motion, so we can talk about it. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1378 as presented.
Second.
You have a motion on the second? Open up for discussion.
Can we get the language for the basement from standards from somewhere else?
Like from another ordinance or a state statute?
From the definition.
City, yeah.
Yes. The definition in 1C, I believe, is state fire code definition. That's where most of those came from.
Okay. Yes, the concern is, most of our basements are not seven feet.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Or a lot of.
Under the penalty section, it says an authorized employee. What are we defining as an authorized employee? Under 6.40.080, first one, there's a penalty for violation.
Typically, that is either the.
Code enforcement?
The code enforcement, or.
Building commissioner.
Or the building commissioner, which would be either John Merritt or Joe Kramer.
The question I have is similar to Eileen's. So is there any grandfathering for a facility, a home today that, or an apartment, where there's less than that minimum?
That's a good question. Yes and no. It would be broadly applicable.
The example that Eileen gave of the ceiling height of minimum, but there's plenty of 100-year-old homes in this town that don't go to seven feet.
Correct.
Or there's a room that might be 60 feet, that's really meant for a very young child, that might not meet that 70 feet, 70 square foot minimum. So would those be grandfathered only for the family that's in there that owns it at the time, or what?
Typically, these, these ordinances are broadly applicable. The grandfathering comes in that you can't force them to renovate it. There is some discretion with any ordinance enforcement. So if you, if he comes in and inspects and it's six and a half feet, but there's plenty of egress, and it's more than adequate in terms of the square footage, as with any other ordinance, I would think they would say, okay, it's acceptable. But again, these are kind of broad guidelines.
And I think similar to what we've done with the ordinance before this, if there are some specific concerns about that, we can, we can dive back into some of those minimums and, because you're right, there are some 100-year-old homes here that probably don't have a seven-foot ceiling in the basement, and, but it has everything that would allow someone to live there.
My bigger concern on the basement is the exterior egress, when it's used for sleeping purposes. And I know that goes on. It goes on everywhere, not just in Speedway.
Yeah, I agree.
That's true. And, but they're not meeting fire code either, if they don't have a second exterior egress. So it's not just this ordinance.
Right.
But that's pretty basic health safety. They need to have a second egress. And if they're calling it out as a basement, you know, that's the other thing, is I don't believe under my board regulations, you can even list that as a, as a bedroom.
Living, living.
As living quarters.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're, it's like turning a battleship. You're trying to eventually educate people that if you don't have a second egress and one that somebody can crawl out of in a basement, they shouldn't be living there. And you can't list it for sale as a basement or.
But then someone could buy that and live down there, you know, or have someone live.
I mean, you can, you know, a family's.
And we're not going to be knocking on doors, doing measurement. I mean, that's not what the intent here is.
A family's going to do what they're going to do. And if their teenage son wants to have his room in the basement, and everybody understands the risks, so be it. But again, it's not, this isn't meant to be punitive. It's meant to be instructive.
Well, that, that's a family decision, but I'm talking about, you know, if there's.
Unrelated.
Yeah, unrelated rental, rental property.
Of course.
And then, I guess, you know, that.
Yeah. And that's, that's the other thing, is you shouldn't be offering it for rent to the market, making money off it, or having somebody not, not in your family, living in.
Right.
An area that is not habitable under fire code regulations or under an ordinance.
Right.
But of course, as a landlord, you don't know what your tenant is going to do down the road.
Yeah, somebody at the lectern.
Yeah. So, you know, I'll go ahead and ask for anybody would like to make a comment.
Oh, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to jump.
Feel free.
Wait.
You're more than welcome.
Well, we do have some concerns about this. Obviously, a short-term rental guest does not come with all of the property that a regular person would have in their permanent residence, clothing, books, personal items. So I don't think they really take as much space. We don't have dressers or a lot of furniture for storage, because they don't really need that. And the way this is written, if you can only have two persons per bedroom, if I had relatives that wanted to visit for Christmas, they're, they're not allowed to sleep in the living room on a fold-out couch. I, I don't think that's really the intention, is that you can't have guests in your personal residence. And I do think that short-term rentals are somewhat different, especially for the 500. I think we know how many people we, everyone tries to accommodate, whether they're a short-term rental host or just hosting their friends and family, and people don't want them to drive home, perhaps after the race. I think that there should be some, some leeway written in for circumstances like that.
Am I correct in saying that this is more for an established resident, not for the, this is not aimed at our short-term rentals, correct? This is more?
It's not. Although they do have to, your short-term rentals, you have to advertise or list what the maximum occupancy is. But we can write all sorts of leeway in there, but then it's, becomes unenforceable.
Right.
And say, well, yeah, on any given night, I can have all of my family stay. Well, how big's your family?
But would a fold-out, fold-out couch be, be a sleeping unit?
It is a sleeping unit.
So, in the case that was just referenced, if it was a self-sleeper and it slept two, that would add to.
In the provision, it says that no more than two persons per bedroom. That's, so if you've got two people in each bedroom, and you've got a couple people on the fold-out couch, I don't think you're violating anything, because it's a separate.
Sleeping area.
So a living room could be considered a bedroom under those circumstances?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
But to your point, I mean, you know, personally, I've lived in my home for 29 years. I don't have a whole bunch of people come over and spend the night with me very often, but occasionally I do. And so, so what? You know, who's going to come knock on my door and say, you know, you've got, you violated the, the ordinance here for occupancy? Nobody.
It's, it's not intended to cure sleepovers, you know, or anything like that. This is intended and focused and written for people that are dwelling there, not spending the night, but people that are living.
It's being presented at the same.
Two or three families that want to live in one, one dwelling, I don't think.
I don't know the details of this. It's all what I've been told. But during the FFA event, the annual convention, there was a home in Speedway that had dozens of high school students sleeping in it. There were not dozens of beds, dozens of pull-out couches. So kids brought a sleeping bag, and they threw it out, and it was a great deal for everybody, because they didn't pay hardly anything to rent the home. That's not a great application of, we have a few folks sleeping over. That's a short-term rental renting to, probably to people they didn't realize they were renting to. So understand, it's a challenging, challenging situation, but we, we shouldn't, you know, I think that helps to prevent that sort of thing, or at least have something for that officer to have discretion for. If they show up and there's 15 kids and one adult sleeping in a home, that's made to sleep eight, they have some, they have full discretion to be able to deal with it.
I think what the, the hosts have talked about when we've met before is two per bedroom plus two, to allow for a pull-out couch in the living room or someone sleeping on the couch.
Or even another one in the basement. I mean, it's understood that, you know, you'd have one in the living room, one in the basement, and a couple of bedrooms. I mean, I, three bedrooms, I get it.
If I can, I, my perception of this is, I think the timing of us doing this on the night that this is being presented.
It's short-term rental.
Yeah, they're, they're two separate things. And I think it's important on the short-term rental, that is, the police officers are responding to look for the violations there. This is a code enforcement, building inspection issue. So to me, it's two different things. This is not aimed at the short-term rentals.
Agreed.
You know, because I don't believe a police officer is going to be going through, counting, seeing if our building code and bedrooms and, you know, are set up the way they're supposed to. They, they are there for a disturbance to make peace. This is not, so the fact that this is right, right after the first one, it's, it has.
With incidental.
Correct, correct. Yes, I think.
Well, thank you.
I mean, there are many examples of more than one family living in a dwelling. And that's what this.
Yeah, this is more of a long-term issue that has been occurring, that we can send our code enforcement out to respond to. Grant, am I?
Yeah, I think you're correct.
Is that that once, you know, once a month, once a year overnight, where you have a bunch of people in your house, sleeping, nobody cares, really, as long as you're not disturbing the peace.
Right. Yeah, because, I mean, if that's the case, then the month of May, we have a disaster.
We'd all be screwed.
Yes. That, that is our concern as well. Thank you.
I mean, if there's desire for us to look further into this, do a little more research, we can definitely, you know, one or two ways we could handle it. You could approve this on first reading, and then we could work towards second reading, or you can just table it until we're ready to bring it back after we look at some of the concerns or issues.
If I, if I can, my opinion is, I'm fine with this as presented with a few adjustments.
I don't want it to.
I don't want it to be at our next meeting when we have the short-term rental. I think it needs to be separate.
Okay.
To give some people peace of mind. Just kind of my thoughts.
I mean, from what I've heard through residents out there, that I think it's more concerning about a public safety situation when you have 40-some individuals, you know, at a party that is supposed to last all night. Are they going to be staying there? And when you have a maximum occupancy of 10, let's say, you know, where is the definition of, you know, those people that are sleeping over versus those that are staying there for the whole night? And are attending, you know, a party that would be occurring? And I know we've had several of those happen around town. Is it a public safety issue if they exceed the occupancy? Or if it is a rented facility, then you're going to have guests exceed the occupancy, you know, at that point in time. So I think as a law enforcement, I'd be very concerned about, okay, what, are they truly breaking, you know, the ordinance?
Well, I think that gets back to my question that I brought up about authorized employee. Maybe we need to spell that out, that it lists code enforcement and our building authority and this is not a police issue. I think that would clarify a lot of, a lot of our discussion tonight on this. Because I think they're intermingling here, all these large words you're using. I feel like I need to make one up here. But I think if we include that language, I think that kind of defines thing is it's, this is a building inspection code enforcement thing where the short term involves the police department for that.
Good point. And I will refer to Bob's point where if you continue, or if you look at backing off on some of these restrictions, then it becomes unenforceable. So why have it? Why do it? And it doesn't address what we really want to address.
And perhaps I can insert some language specifically stating that homes built, and I don't know that I'll pick a specific year, but older homes built, if they don't meet one particular restriction, they're in compliance if they meet all of the other restrictions. So if they meet the square footage and they meet the ingress egress, they meet the, all of the other requirements. If it's six-foot ceilings rather than seven-foot or six-and-a-half-foot. I'll put in some grandfather language for facilities like that.
Okay. Would anybody else would like to speak?
Do I have to introduce myself again?
No.
You're fine.
You're familiar with me. From a Realtor's standpoint, I'm reading through this and there are so many bedrooms that you have to go through to get to another bedroom in Speedway. It's, I actually audibly laughed when I read that because that was a design at some point. There was an attic that was blown out, made for bedrooms when the people had five children in the two-bedroom, one-bath house. So that right there, we, there ought to be some kind of a consideration of grandfathering. Or are you wanting, because I'm not sure why you guys are doing this, but if you're wanting to start to eliminate that if the property goes as a rental or someone's starting to make money, but Sally and Joe buy a house with three bedrooms and one of them you have to go through in order to get to the other bedroom, is that not okay? It is common here. And I've been in a lot more houses than the majority of people. So I can just tell you that, that's almost a, I can't even imagine telling somebody that, that you're going to force them to put a hallway in and then now you don't meet the seven-foot wide anyway. That to me is, I don't know what your intent is with this. And clearly, you're having challenges with probably a 5% group of the whole. But there are definitely some concerns by the fact that we do have older dwellings and that a lot of these are maybe not taking that into consideration. The other thing that, I'm sorry, I'm going to bring this up, David. We, as STR owners, we've met several times and I have gotten to know quite a few of them here in Speedway and we have identified, we know their addresses, we know the owner's address, et cetera. We, by tax records, we have identified over 60, probably more at this point, probably about 80. And one of the things that we were very, very, very agreeable to was two people per bedroom plus two. We know there are, we know that the Future Famers of America are bunking. And if you have someone on site, that reservation's canceled immediately and they're, if you want to, if you want to kick 14-year-olds out, if they're quiet, I wouldn't want them in my plumbing. Now, I have two-two bedroom, one and a half bath, and they're less than 800 square feet and I won't allow more than four. And I cringe every time I see four because I know my plumbing. I also have a 1,300 square feet, two-bedroom, that I would like the opportunity to have two per bedroom plus two because I have a huge living room and every, and queen-size beds in each room. And it's a lovely situation for them. We wanted that in our permit. We asked for occupancy standards. You are going to require us to divulge that. But with this, we're not going to be able to do two per bedroom plus two. So I will beg to differ with you that they're not related because unfortunately, we're agreeing, we're happy about the permit. I don't think any, I think we've come together and I really like what's happened. But this is almost a, through the back door, a gotcha. Because we would like to see those properties that are allowing 16 people in them, and I can identify several of them to you. But they don't have eight bedrooms. They have a basement with one egress window, three queen-size beds and two bunk beds. They sleep 16. If you want people in the town to come here and that's their idea of a vacation, they are a different audience than the people who, idea of a vacation is eight guys in a four-bedroom house coming for golf at the brickyard. They have different wallets, different expectations, different abilities to use our amenities. So for me, I'd rather you put it in our ordinance that we are only allowed two per bedroom plus two if this is then going to come along. Because this is more restricting because it will, of course, apply to everyone. And we're part of everyone. So I would like that to be considered for discussion. I think it's a huge challenge. And at the same time, I think you're doing yourselves a disservice if we don't limit houses. I do know that Airbnb, for instance, only allows 16 people in a property unless they can prove more bedrooms. That's the maximum. But I don't know that that's doing all of us here in Speedway a favor unless it's, you know, the House on Cunningham that used to be the bed and breakfast. So we don't have those type dwellings, so it's a concern.
If I can respond?
Yeah, please.
Which I tend to do.
Good.
Yeah. I think it's important to note that this is not just houses, it covers apartments.
I understand.
And that as well.
I understand that there's probably a subject matter that.
Yeah, and I think it gets back to the point that this was put in right after your, and it's muddying the waters. But I think that's something that we could talk about if, you know, to add that to your, if that would give you peace of mind.
I'm happy to see it. Honestly, it was something, I didn't understand why you guys didn't address it in our ordinance.
I beg to disagree. The occupancy guidelines say, and I quote, "An accessory room such as a kitchen, den, or other space shall not be considered a bedroom unless it complies with local and state ordinances and regulations, including those relating to life safety, including exterior egress." So in your example, an accessory room, say it's a living room. As long as it complies, it's a bedroom. So you can have two plus two plus two.
Okay.
As long, and it says that right here. I just quoted that.
And so a resident can do that too? You could use a kitchen.
They could if it complies with other life safety regulations and state law requirements and this ordinance. It could be. If it's got, if it's a den and it's got a pull-out couch in it and it's complies with the other requirements in here, that's fine. But what we're trying to combat are lots of people in a confined space.
Right, okay.
And I think it gets back to the point that I was trying to make is the authorized person, this is going to be our building and code enforcement that's going to come, building and code enforcement at one or two, and trust me, they will not be out at one or two in the morning.
No, I understand that. Well, and that's, I mean, yeah, that's not the problem. I mean, people, 16 people on a property in Speedway is always going to be a challenge.
Yep.
It just is. But, but you do have defined as an occupant as means any individual over one year of age sleeping, cooking, or eating in and having possession of a dwelling. That's an overnight guest. Just, that's your definition. Now, I would, I would think it has to be for a period over seven days or something, but, but, nope.
This is our expert, that's why we.
I understand, that's why.
If you start putting those limitations in, then, okay, they stay six nights, they leave for a night and they come back and they're there another six nights. I mean, you, at some point in time, you got to draw the line and say, we've got to make it enforceable.
All right, thank you.
We, I mean, I do, I do not want this to be on our next agenda.
That's fine.
I don't want it to be on this one.
Can I second that, Mr. Vice President?
You may.
I just did.
Adam, what do you think?
I got a lot of options, you guys don't want to hear it.
How long do you want it to go?
Yeah.
No, we've gone a lot longer than this.
Well, I think at this point, I think it would be prudent to table ordinance for 1378 and for further discussion, review. And then, given the changes, then we can come back and make it discussion at that point in time.
Will do.
Are you tabling it to a specific meeting or just tabling it until we're ready to bring it back?
Until you're ready to bring it back at that point in time.
We probably need a motion and a second for that.
Okay.
And then a vote.
As for a motion?
So I need to rescind my motion? Was it seconded?
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then you could just either rescind your motion in the second or go ahead and vote it down, voted down on first reading.
I'll rescind my motion.
I'll rescind my second.
Okay.
Motion and second.
Now I'll make a motion that we table, ordinance number 1378.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, we got a motion and a second? Yeah?
You can, if you're, your discretion, you.
We can just have concurrence?
Concurrence.
Concurrence.
All is in here. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments. And that, you're going to be handling for Phil.
I'm the clerk treasurer for this one item.
Time and a half?
So just before you this evening, I'll kind of go over both of them. The claims from June 10th through June the 23rd totaling $1,019,534.36 are presented for your consideration. Also, in addition to that, there are nine different accounts that have adjustments of several different types. Those are also presented to you for approval.
Okay, let's take a look at the claims. The claims have been submitted by the town clerk treasurer and our town manager.
Move that we approve the claims and the adjustments as presented.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Any discussion? There are none, I'll call for a vote. All is in favor of the claims and utility adjustments as presented. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. You have reports, our town manager?
I just have one very brief item. We will, we are putting budgets together, as you know. I am looking for the second or third weeks of August to have our budget presentation workshops with the town council. I'll be sending an email out, but staff is supposed to submit their first drafts by next Friday. We have a meeting with our financial advisors this Friday reviewing different information about our revenues. And then we will review those, meet with those department heads, bring a final budget to the council to consider there in the second or third week of August. We'll do it like we did last year, I think, two evenings, starting at, say, 5:30. We should be done by 7:30 each evening and we'll, we'll go from there. That's, that's the report that I have. I spoke enough this evening. Thank you.
Okay, great. Appreciate it, Grant. Report from town council members? Let's start off with Gary Ranks.
Nothing to report.
More from David Lindsay.
Nothing to report.
Next up is Eileen Fisher.
Nothing this evening.
And vice president.
Man, I hate to mess it up. We're coming up on the 4th of July, which is always an awesome time of year. It's a lot of fun, especially for kids. Just a reminder to all the parents out there to keep a close eye on the little ones. Nothing can spoil a 4th of July celebration anymore than somebody getting hurt or burnt with fireworks. So just be careful and keep an eye on them. Otherwise, have a great time. That's all I have.
Okay. It's a report from council president. At this point in time, I really don't have anything to report that is in addition to what has been said tonight. I appreciate everybody's discussion tonight is very helpful. And it is 8:08. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.